Everyone, it is Monday, September 30th, 2024. This is the planning board meeting. It is 7:15. If you are, we are recording on Zoom, Facebook and
WCAT6.
Yeah, the cable TV. If you are recording, please let us know. And if you're gonna speak, please tell us your name and who you're with, or if you're just a citizen. So we'll start out with the pledge.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business, we have an A and R submitted by AJ Realty Group regarding 51 and 57 Dean Street.
We get on firm?
Yeah, yeah, on the table. Okay, go ahead, tell us about the project.
Uh, it's just a, it's an A and R plan separating one lot that has an existing multifamily on it. It's making two other lots, which it's cutting those in half that I built a duplex on and leaving one lot in the middle to be built on in the future.
Okay.
But it meets all the requirements for the village zoning as far as road frontage and area.
Any questions?
By separating this, because it is tight space, are you making any other properties non-conforming by doing this?
No, everything still conforms like the existing lot that it came from. 51 Dean Street, that still has the road frontage and has all the area it needs for it being a multifamily. We brought this plan like two months ago and you guys had signed it off, but we had to adjust one of the lines because it's tight and the line was at an angle. So you weren't gonna be able to put a building there because you wouldn't meet the setbacks. So the line was just adjusted.
Okay, cuz that's, I had a question on that. So this this dimension here. So it's 19 feet, but the narrow, the shortest dimension would be here. So it's very square. I mean, it's, so that's gotta be 15 feet minimum.
Correct.
So do you know if this is 15 feet? Cuz that's gonna be the shortest distance from the corner of the property line.
I would assume it is. I'm not, I'm not an engineer.
Do you have a little piece of paper?
Perfect. Okay.
Just me.
And you learned something new here. Okay.
That's right, so we got these things.
This one is over here.
Over here?
Yep. There's that right there. That's, that's the frame of this right now. And then whether you're creating
It's gonna be an empty one?
And then you're creating another lot where you
What is this house?
That is this house.
Oh, that's that one.
Where you guys are really stacking them in yet.
Gonna make the area. And then you have advantage on that. Try to come up with a square footage, what do you need, right? Is everybody all set? Is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, the gentleman didn't announce his name or his residential address.
He didn't?
Yeah, we just need that.
Oh, John Rackard in for open meeting law.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. John Burke, 266 Bemis Road.
All right, is there a motion to endorse? Yeah, I'm in motion on endorsing the A and R for 51 and 57 Dean Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Rooking aye.
Aye.
David Deverne, aye.
Ed Long, you're gonna aye?
Rooking aye.
Rich A. Hacker, aye. Sign?
Yeah.
Do you have a fine tip pen? See, but the fine tip is sharp, I mean. And those are the sharpest, they have the fine tip and the ultra fine tip. They're double sided. And I have OGs of both. If those weren't performing well. Deep pockets help on meeting day. Karen found those, I will not take credit.
Aye, international sensation then.
I guess so. Yeah, all yours. Oh, yeah.
Derek, do you need a copy of the agenda?
Laura, all the fees were paid in there?
Yes, yep.
All right. Hmm.
They're double sided.
Do you have a copy, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the public hearing that's been continued to today from July 22nd, 2024. A special permit application for Next Gen Parts at 764 Main Street, Warren, Mass. So I'm in the buttock, so I will now recuse myself and leave. So Ed is gonna take over and you're gonna have to watch the Zoom in case somebody comes in.
Well, you don't have to leave, you just can't take part.
Well, yeah. AG suggests that I leave.
Oh.
So no one, there's no bias. That's fine. Okay. Okay, when you were here last time, you needed to come up with a plan we've seen. So if you'd like to, I guess, present it to us, just remember to identify yourself.
My name is Julian Votrova from New England Environmental Design. Holden, Massachusetts. I was hired by Next Gen Property Holdings LLC to come up with a site plan per the rules and regulations of the town of Warren's requirements.
Okay.
So the plan that was submitted to, I don't know if you have a, I have a copy of it right there. I guess we just get right down. What has been done on this plan is pretty much an existing condition plan of the property because they're not proposing on changing any of the site constraints or site. Building, parking, sidewalks, drainage, lighting, it's all there. So we're showing it on this plan as it exists today.
Okay.
And also submitted were some elevation plans of the building that were from archives showing the, what the building looks like. So we went through the checklist under the zoning bylaw and everything that's required under that checklist is illustrated on the existing condition plan.
Okay.
And that's pretty much what we've got.
Okay. Can we look at? Yeah, take a look at it.
Yes, I had forwarded the updated plan. I also have some 11 by 17 plans, if that's if anyone would like a small scale, smaller carous. Thank you so much. Oh, of course.
Topography.
Little chairs.
Gas cover, other home colors. Another gas cover, sewer manholes, sidewalk. This is the actual pavement. These dotted lines were, they're nine by 18 spots, there are no lines out there. But we took a typical 18 by nine footprint for a parking spot. Fit them in how we feel that they were utilized. And we ended up with these numbers here. And it's pretty much how the site looks.
Where is employee parking?
Employee parking?
Yeah.
It could be wherever they could park, anywhere in here or anywhere on the property. No designated area. They could designate it, but that's a as long as it's a place for them to go to. And they have the A4 spaces, so.
Existing.
Existing. Eighty four is existing.
I just wanna make sure.
These spaces look like they're actually the building is here, that's, this is all paved right to the burn. So ABD, they, they need to fix space is, in this particular application, does go to the straightaway. That's the way it was approved that this building was built. And we have many, many photographs that those were, this main entrance right here. So this is what Cosmo tried for the last.
Are you gonna paint those?
Um, that's up to them. I don't know that it's, what are you said they're doing? I don't know if it's really necessary, but if it's a I will suggest not to, since they're not there. Because once you start creating the parking spaces, you're gonna have to go by code. And that will just give you more, a lot more work to do. So
Symmetries.
So maybe this will be your parking spaces and here maybe just pull over.
As in a buttock approach? I don't know what they're talking about.
You will get your, your chance. Yeah, same with all of these. If you come, if you come with a parking lot plan because you're gonna get more cars or anything with the building inspector, these are gonna, the code is gonna trigger. Then you're gonna be screwed up. So existing, it's okay. Existing is good.
Okay.
Yeah, as a site plan, you, like the things that I mentioned, you know, building entrance. Designation, you can probably pull it up. The lead guy has a screen on the screen.
That's not the point, so.
Yeah, I don't wanna mess with this stuff.
Questions that he's asking, I am not witness to.
Those are the things that I think you're gonna have to add.
How we think?
And, you know, totally
You don't understand.
Just, so if I don't explain what it is. Where, you know, you're now you're going through
There you go.
Operations every day of operations and have your, you know, designated area for, you know, employee parking, for example.
I don't know if he's talking about employee parking.
You think you have to share it to, so people in a public?
The question.
We have
No question now.
Well, on this site plan, just write, you know, that's what you think is gonna be the so when somebody pulls this plan later and you see it, oh, that's the employee parking. Okay, this is the main entrance or the whole just so it's, we talked about a little bit.
I have it up as a PDF. It's all, I just don't You got it? Okay. You gotta share your screen then.
We just did.
Okay. You gotcha.
Don't worry, you're covered.
Plans that go along with this, the elevation showed that from buildings, so it shows that that is
Yeah, no, that's fine. I could just, the one is to talk to itself. A site plan is, that's why I said, where's the entrance?
Well, this is actually an existing condition.
Where's the existing entrance?
Yeah, I can write it right now.
No, that's fine, but
We already made a list of things you'd like added to it. And I can add the pertinent, whatever detail it wants. Or just label, some labels. Is there any other labels that you'd like to?
Well, like I said, the, you know, employee parking or, you know, employee entrance. You may wanna say where, if you're gonna have it, you know, a car that you're gonna, you're gonna take apart, where is this gonna go in or out? Just a little bit on the operations side. My suggestion is, yeah, don't, if it's existing, that's existing. Don't commit a plan with this parking lot because this is not to code.
But that's what's
That's what it is, it's grandfather and you're okay.
So the, as far as everything that's there, we are leaving existing as far as their operations do. So do we have to comment on the other thing?
If you're gonna come up, you have
You need to identify yourself.
I'm gonna take one of these.
John, uh, our next gentleman.
John White.
Bruce Oliver. I was just asking if we had this, like, change anything there as far as like, we're using the layout exactly how it was always used. That's, that's what I was saying.
Do you have to change?
What he's saying to clarify, like, the uses of the land and stuff, like the employee parking and the main entrances and stuff.
If you look into a site plan definition, you know, you will, you know, the first thing, oh, what's the entrance? You got the main street or the parking. I know this, the rest of it looks like an existing plan, but you wanna tell here is, you know, how are you gonna call this? Next Gen Parks? Here is Next Gen Parks. This bull, you know, you're showing off your, your project.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So anybody who comes out and, let me see the plan when they submit it. Oh, that's their building. Oh, existing parking lot. Oh, main entrance. You know.
Is there a specific list of these? Julian Votrova from New England Environmental Design? Just so that I'm clear on the detail, so I don't miss something. Is there, can we go through a list of, of what exactly you want on this plan? Because I guess that is, we're not gonna, we did submit a existing building plan that shows windows and doors and overhead doors. So do I have to show that on this plan too? That's typically not done in the field that I
I, I have a quick question. You're showing an intermittent stream. So you got wetland on the property?
It's a drainage ditch. That's where it looks like
Well, you said it's intermittent stream.
Well, that's cuz of, yeah, it's drainage intermittent.
Did you bring this to conservation?
We're not changing anything, so we don't need to. We're not changing anything on the site. We're not digging any holes, we're not changing any grades, we're not, we're not doing anything but using what's there. So that's, that's not a necessary we're not doing work within 100 feet of the wetlands. So it does not need to go to conservation until they decide that they want to change something on the site, so.
So is it really drainage, not a stream?
It's got drainage going into it and it's got, it comes off, it comes off of this area up here. There's a stream from the woods up off of Burbank Street.
Yeah.
And it comes into this and there's, there's catch basins and there's stuff dumping into it, so. And there's culvert pipes and there's a pipe, pipe that goes under Main Street that we're just assuming from maps that we are able to get that this is above the location. I did not camera or do anything subsurface.
But you have, this is referenced in prior deeds, that the subsurface stream.
Yeah, and the mass highway street layout of Route 67 shows that there's some type of a pipe in there. But instead, we didn't get into any subsurface detail. Because we're not changing anything. I keep laying back for that.
Well, yeah, you guys keep on saying that, saying you're not changing anything, but you are changing the use because it was an auto dealership at one point.
So is the use not, not physical?
It's not an auto dealership anymore, it's gonna be a parts store.
Okay.
So you're changing, it's not the same thing.
What am I changing physically on the, on the site?
Well, no, I'm not saying you are on that. But I'm also saying, because it is brought to our attention now, it doesn't mean that we can just ignore it and say, just because everybody else did it.
What's brought to your attention?
Well, a stream.
That's fine. I'm showing you that this is a
I would just be
We're not proposing anything to alter the
No, I, I would just feel better if conservation had a say. And just, if they say, no, you're good, you're not in our jurisdiction, you're not, it's already pre, um, preexisting prior to such and such, or, you know, you're not supposed to have
I've been doing this since 1986. If we're not changing anything physically on the ground in the, for the Wetland Protection Act, we don't file with the local conservation commission. If we're changing something, I would fully agree with you. We need to get the details and go through the Wetland Protection Act.
I, I just don't like when, is there anything on that property draining into the stream?
Not that I know of.
You mean from the property draining into the stream? Or does it all come from outside the property?
Well, you can't, they can't handle anything that's not on their property. Anything that's off their property is not their responsibility. But if they're draining parking lots where they have runoff from the parking lots going into the stream, that's something that should probably be addressed.
What's, what are we addressing?
Not to continue there.
We're not changing it. So I don't have, I keep me addressing anything that's existing.
He's, he's kind of right, it's existing, he's not changing it.
There's no impact.
But we could ask conservation and see, are you okay with all this?
Is all this paved?
Just all these areas are paved. Yeah. So whatever, however, the dealership did it before, Wetland Protection Act was enacted in 1970. So this was done after 1970 or been repaved since 19, I don't think this is 1970 asphalt. And all the buildings, there was a big fire there. So this has all been redone, so it was allowed since 70 to now, nothing's changed. We're physically not changing it, so that's why I'm not elaborating on it.
No, I understand.
I just wanna keep it as, I felt that I went through the actual letter of your, your requirements and put everything on yes, I agree, I didn't put the entrance of the building, but it is on the elevation plan, so.
Okay.
But I'll add, we can condition that you wanna plan with these other details? No problem.
I was looking at the Google pictures and I think, yeah, you, you're a good parking lot in front. It's just that here it looks so short.
Yeah.
The property line, it's, it's kind of like way into your parking, but the road is far out, so like I said, as long as you don't propose a new parking layout, you'll be fine. Because anything, any little thing and all that, what David is saying is gonna trigger, you know.
Right, any change here, we're gonna
Oh, you say, oh, we have to put all those, these trees, it's gonna make more parking. Okay, that's a completely story, that, that's gonna go, that's not gonna be cheap, so.
I'm gonna have to tell them.
But the front apartment just checked and it's okay. Now, the question is gonna come, did you do something in the inside? Like existing conditions inside?
A plan of the inside?
Yeah.
There's a plan that, that was, I think it showed the floor plan and now, whatever was built is what's
Okay, so we have a floor, a floor then?
Yeah, well, it shows a different rooms in the office, bathrooms and all that, it was in there.
And those are the names of that plan, are what you're gonna use? That's the same name?
Yeah.
Could I see it?
This is a small one.
Elevation plan, it was a architectural
I'm looking at a floor plan.
An architectural plan. I know I'm
They may not be directly up here, but I got it here.
Probably the building problem. What about the arrangements?
No, that was, that was, I don't know.
I will just add that to the package. I will just add that to the package. The plan is in the elevation, so it comes as a whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this.
And this is, that's what's, that's what's in this file that I inherited, so, yeah. That's the current one.
It was an elevation that showed the building from when it was built after the fire.
Okay, maybe you look for it and give it to her later, so I add to the file.
We were the last time.
And I always, when you, when I brought you all those points, that's all.
I didn't make them over to you the first time.
I didn't see a plan inside.
Okay.
No, I didn't. I saw that. The other one, I said, I don't like that one. This looks like a napkin drawing. I like this one and I, I wanna see the floor plan, you know, if you have that existing conditions floor plan. And put your own, here's where my office is gonna be. Here's what this is gonna be. Just name it. So like I said, when, you know, when the building inspector goes and goes to give you a, um, certificate of, of, he's gonna pull the plan. Okay, so where's the entrance? Okay, oh, it's here. Okay, it's good. Where's he pull the employee party? There. Okay, so let's go inside. Is that an office? He's gonna pull in. Oh, yeah, it has a desk. Yeah, it's an office. That's what he's gonna do. So he has to, you know, collaborate that you presented is what you're showing to him and then he'll give you the certificate of the purpose. Nothing out of this road. Like I said, it will, it will get really bad, not bad, but very difficult to accomplish if you propose, you know, in that parking lot, let's say, we're gonna take all those trees down because we're gonna have more parking. Okay, not that. That is a special project. You don't, may not wanna go that way. Mr. Chairman, so besides the, those other plans that I asked, uh, the floor plan of the building would beach space indicated by the client. And if they have elevations, they'll be great too. That should be included in the package.
Okay, but you'd like to see those?
Yeah, it would be nice to see the whole package.
Okay.
You know, I don't think, they say they already have it, so just imagine them over.
So I have a couple of questions. Are you guys gonna be changing the parking lot in any way or paving it? You're not doing anything to it at all or upgrades to parking lot?
No.
I think if we do that, um, we should just put that in writing if there is any changes to parking lot that they need to come forward. Come back to us because that stream needs to be addressed, that they should not be allowing runoff or drainage going in if they're gonna change the parking lot in any way. They gotta, they gotta correct that.
I wanna make sure that that doesn't mean typical maintenance. If a, if a pothole occurs, make it put some patch. That's not a trigger.
I think that's fine.
That's, you know, if you change.
If they change the shape.
Changing the grade, the shade, repaving it.
Okay, I just wanna, perfect.
Cause you stop putting.
Seal coating is fine. That's maintenance. Seal coating is a typical maintenance.
Just fill in the cracks.
Yeah, but again, you have to be cautious because you are near a stream there and you don't want anything running off in there. The seal coat does have oils in it and if anybody, if you have a seal coated before, the first few rains, you get that haze on it. That haze shouldn't be running down into that stream. So you'd have to protect it to make sure nothing runs down into that stream.
Whoever you hire has to follow state common law.
This is ruled in. Anyone else on the board? We have a member of the public ask a question?
Yeah, like I said, I'm, if they present the floor plan and, and even, I don't need the elevations, but the floor plan is important for the project. And then I'm, I think I'm good with that. Just will be the operations, you know, and make sure that they don't become a junkyard, so to speak. We don't dare not, but we're gonna have to put that on right because junkyards are not allowed.
Right.
So.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Member of the public, you just identify yourself, please.
I'm Richard Hamlin. I live at seven fifty-one Main Street, budding the property. The discussion concerning the stream, it is a historical stream on the old maps. It empties into a lake in back of, of what was formerly Leo Sled's house. That empties into the Quayborg River. I suggest that you discuss this with the DPW because the runoff off Curtis Ave dams up at the driveway of, of, um, Chuck Schleff during melts in the spring. You generally can expect to see flooding in the spring if we have winters like we are having. Um, the overflow is such that it actually dams up the storm grate at the end of the driveway. And then the water runs off down the street and it dumps into, um, a yard. Uh, it dumps into the belly down by Leo Sled's house and then Route sixty-seven gets flooded. It's not something, it's, it's something that happened by design, I guess, because there was a historic house that was located there that was removed in nineteen ninety, which was the old tavern.
Could you show me where the house is?
My house or?
No, that house, it was demolished.
My house?
No, the house, it was demolished. You just mentioned the house.
Oh, right next to my house.
So your house is here?
Mine, yeah, right here.
There was a house here?
Yeah, it was a tavern. It relocated to Connecticut back in nineteen ninety when we bought our house. So for thirty-three years, we've seen the change in the ecology of the, of it. And DPW's had to respond. Um, I mean, we really had a log dam there unfortunately last spring. Um, and the flooding was intense. I, I actually got it on video and it's on, um, Warren Neighborhood Watch because it was a rip. So I have other questions. Just, you know, I can bring them up.
Thank you. You wanna, you wanna, go ahead.
Get done now?
I wanna get done now. Okay. Um, questions concerning special permit. Is the permit being issued for one business or for the location of the structure?
It's for the business that applied for the permit.
Um, I have questions concerning whether one or two other businesses currently or will exist in the future. One, meaning because there is an automotive permit given to the previous owner and secondly, there is activity there of a second business that is not, um, being discussed. And it's certainly relative to what you are extending as to the conditions of this permit.
Okay.
So I'd like to know how that relates. I'd like to know how the parking lot, which is really what my wife and I are seriously involved with, um, relates to the conditions that will exist for that second business, possibly the other one as well.
Mr. Chairman, maybe you can address, uh, ask the client to address that.
Annoyed, yes.
Um, question of, uh, town of Southbridge has visibility buffers. I have no idea on how the growth will occur with this business. I can only recognize their current location in Spencer and the extensively large lot that is present perhaps will require, um, a review in the future for a visibility rough, a buffer. If we are going to be exposed to cars of various conditions being in storage there, which was discussed at the previous meeting. These cars that are gonna be sold there are not the cars of the type that were being sold when Spencer's owned it. Uh, we've recognized that there have been cars of the type that they're going to be selling. Visiting that area, we used to call them glass packs when we were kids. Loud exhaust. I'm wondering if there will be conditions placed on the idling time of these cars, whether they're being repaired or whether they are being sold. Because to be honest with you, uh, the vehicles that did return two or three times, two, twice now, we heard in the house. It was that loud. And if the engines are revving, we certainly would be concerned about it. Uh, the hours of operation, they're self-employed. You never know sometimes when you're gonna leave at night. So tax time comes, everything goes to the wind. You're just buried up until April fifteenth. But we need to understand, and we, we do recognize, we're neighbors. We're in a neighborhood. Everybody in the neighborhood is a fluid as far as conditions go. Sometimes you're upset with them, sometimes and then things disappear and they never return. The conditions that we expect from the, not, from the hours that you presented at the last meeting um, as conditional for the cars idling, would mean sales hours. But if they're at nine o'clock at night, what do we do? If they're at eleven o'clock at night. I know the gentlemen are working on their business. They wanna get it going. The other business in the location, they're there till eleven at night. We just would like to know, what do we do if, as I said, glass packs are idling at eleven o'clock at night? And they're not even responsible, like, cause they're not being sold, for instance. They're not part of, they're just perhaps somebody visiting. Um, we had some sad experiences with the previous owner where we were awakened early in the morning, we're talking three, four AM, with the ramps of the delivery vehicles being slapped down on the tower. Those have to be addressed by the, by the select board. Um, we've had other issues as well and we hope not to have these issues with these gentlemen. We're self-employed, they're self-employed, but clarity is really essential at this time. And it works for us to, to be on the same page. Um, let's see.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could you ask, um, and what other issues?
Okay.
The other issues?
Yeah.
Uh, delivery, um, was the most important one, early in the morning or late at night.
Okay.
Uh, what other issues do you recognize?
Deliveries were every two hours at night sometimes.
Yeah. Deliveries were constant. Um, I reapproached them.
And unfortunately it didn't work. We had to go to the select.
That was with the prior.
That was with the prior, yeah, yeah. We even discussed it with these gentlemen and we recognized that they're operating on a ninety-five. But, I mean, the last guy told us, um, you know, we can't tell them when to deliver. Oh, that's actually wrong because it's, it was something that she discovered online and yet you can book time for delivery. So with the delivery we're concerned with, with the idling time between business hours, they're selling a particular type of car, we're gonna allow that, but is there gonna be an idling limit on it? Is there gonna be a visibility limit, um, on the exposure? We, as I said, because we discussed the, um, type of recycling at building one. And what are the issues with the other business?
Mr. Chair, I got a question. I, I don't really understand the visibility limit.
The visibility limit would be when, if, is no clarity or understanding as to the use of the lot? It seems like it's just floating by right now.
Well, the lot, my understanding, the lot is for parking of employees or, um, you know, patrons to buy parts or whatever, customers. And then for some vehicles that they may be selling, there is no storage of parts vehicles on the site cause that would make them a junkyard and that is not allowed. So there is no storing of the junk, junk vehicles.
Okay.
My understanding, they're gonna bring in a vehicle into their bay, strip the parts off of it and then that's gonna be shipped off to recycling or whatever they're gonna use. But there cannot be anything stored on the site, um, in the parking lots because they're not a junkyard.
Yeah, and that's not gonna extend to the other business there. The, the use of the other business.
I want, I want the owners to please address other businesses you may have there.
We don't own any other businesses there. And I'm gonna have to ask.
What, what business are you talking about? What do you refer to?
I'm talking about, uh, what formerly was known as the body shop on the backside towards Star X. I'm, um, discussing, um, a business that is being used. It's open, um, till about eleven o'clock at night. Uh, gentlemen have been working on it, including their dogs are there, um, on weekends, on holidays.
Okay, I, I believe the person.
If you can just come up.
John Bressard, our objection. Uh, that person we are renting the previously known body shop to has a business license with the town. I'm pretty sure they got all their stuff. Um, so. They do nothing automotive, nothing relative to our businesses. We don't use that property.
What, what, can you show over there? What, what, Amy, are you talking about?
Are you sure they have a license with the town?
Yes.
Yeah.
You've seen it?
You pause it.
Uh, so I, I don't know the exact perfect dimensions, uh, but what would be listed is loading area here. To, I assume this portion of the property, which was formerly known as the body shop, but it's not.
But you're taking over and that's gone.
What do you mean?
Are, there still gonna be a body shop over there?
No, 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 no body shop. It is not used as a body shop. No, no body shop. Correct. Yes.
Okay, so to address the, your, your neighbor is your business is one and you're not gonna do any body work out of that work there?
Correct.
So why are they still working in there?
They're not doing body work there. That's what I'm trying to say. The people there run their small business and they have a business parent with the town. That was one of our requirements for our lease, our insurance and everything.
What is their business?
They do, uh, yeah, like osmosis machines. They make, they do welding, like, um, high-grade, um, tape welding, very small, very quiet, not like a welding job, it kinda sounds more dramatic, but they clean, I mean, they make very small, like stainless pieces, um, and stuff like that.
Why do they work until one o'clock at night?
I don't think they are. They're not even working there yet, so I don't believe that's true. Cause they have, are still at their old employment for another, I, I just actually talked to them today, two weeks. I believe they are setting up and, um, moving some stuff in after hours of their current career, cause where they work. Um, and I think they're slowly transitioning their tools where they're, they're not performing work, um, and stuff like that.
You're just leasing that space to them?
Correct. They are, they are tenants of ours, I think, I don't know.
But they have no connection to your business?
Not at all. Not, no, not.
What's the name of the business?
Yeah, Phantom Industries.
Phantom?
Phantom Industries.
Jim, can you check on that tomorrow, see if they have a license?
What was Phantom, what?
Phantom Industries.
That's what I'm asking. How is the permit related?
Yes, there.
Well, I guess whatever business happens there, you're gonna have a, 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 a plan of business of idling hours and that will apply to anybody in this project. And we will have that on the conditions as well, so that nobody, I don't think anybody will be working at eleven o'clock PM, you know.
I, I sure won't be, no, no. I go home at four o'clock every day.
There you go. But this business.
No, no, then, no, 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 yeah.
They won't be allowed to operate after hours?
No, I would assume they're gonna work normal.
Because then you get in trouble.
Yeah. Regardless, anything they do is like pure silence and indoors and like, I, I don't, I'm not saying they, I just don't think they're working at those hours and nothing like that.
As, as long as they don't go beyond the operating hours, I think you'll be okay.
Correct, yeah. I would assume they are gonna work normal hours like normal people. Like I said, they are just slowly moving in toolboxes and stuff like that and they just work normal jobs.
The special permit is gonna condition those hours, so if they do go into that, you know, the building inspector is gonna, you know.
You'll get the fine.
Understandably, yes, yes. I, I'm not, they're very nice people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna alert the board. My name's Jim Ferrera. I'm the town administrator for Warren. Uh, I did receive several phone calls, uh, with regards to, uh, this, uh, petition for a special permit. Uh, I, I also had a few office visits from some of the neighbors, uh, on Burbank. Um, you, you know, some recommended conditions that I would highly recommend that this body, uh, consider. Uh, and I think we talked about this just briefly, that this special permit is granted to this petitioner only, period. Uh, any other work that's being done there, any other business that's there, they would have to come in before this body and get a, a permit for that. This is for this petitioner only and cannot be, um, subletted. Yes, subletted, uh, to another entity. The special permit is granted solely for used cars at the property on Main Street, for the sale of used cars at the property on Main Street. There shall be no storage of junk vehicles and/or parts outside of this location, on this location. All vehicles shall be parked in an orderly fashion and shall not be parked within a public way. The site shall be maintained, maintained free of all overgrowth, vegetation, litter, and debris. Any signage and all signs shall be properly permitted by the building department. All public sidewalks along Main Street shall be maintained, including snow removal. And any compliance with these conditions, as well as any other zoning regulations, should, shall be required. You know, there was another issue with lighting that was mentioned by some of the neighbors. And, you know, they suggested maybe the petitioner could look into some shielded lighting, so that it won't shine bright into somebody's house when those lights are put on, especially in the parking lot across the street, because there's, there'd be but several residential homes. And that a six-month review be placed on the permit, you know, just to make sure it's fully compliant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments from anyone here, comments or questions? Anyone on Zoom? Don't see anybody. Anything else from any of the old members, board members?
No, I think we've pretty much covered it. Thought we were pretty clear right off the bat that there's, it's not a junkyard, you're not allowed to have junk vehicles there. We're gonna clarify that in the conditions to make sure that doesn't happen. I know people are getting worried about that, and there's questions on what your, what your license or your permit allows the town. And you only have a class-two permit, which doesn't allow junkyards or anything like that. And that's not what you presented to be, you're presenting to be a parts reseller. So.
Hey, Dave.
Joyce?
Joyce?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I was.
Were you trying to get ahold of us?
I can wait, sorry.
Actually, since you're on there, we could probably pick your mind about the stream on that property too.
Were you gonna, were you gonna comment on that?
Well, I raised my hand at one point, but the gentleman who was presenting is right. It is grandfathered, because this property, I looked on the GIS maps, and the property was built in the nineties, like nineteen ninety-one, like the pavement was in existence, early nineties before the Rivers Act was put in place. So if they do any paving, they should probably just check in with us, and we would likely say, you know, just make sure you put erosion control around the stream while you, you know, it's common sense stuff, hopefully that exists, and then, you know, you just put erosion control and before they do any paving. And if they're really feeling exceptionally generous, they could put in some additional plant life that will prevent any, you know, material from going into the stream.
Sorry, Joyce, did you, did you say who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Joyce Ihawker. I am in a butter, and I'm also the chair of Warren Conservation.
Okay. But Joyce, it's only if they make changes, correct?
That's only if they make changes. As it stands, they, like the gentleman said, they're grandfathered. And as long as they keep the footprint the way it is, they're, they're set.
And that's where we were trying to get that kinda stamped down, understanding if you do change here, or you do anything, change grading, or try to level it off, or anything like that. You're changing it, and it triggers, so.
Do you have anything else, Joyce?
Uh, no, I don't, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Okay.
Yeah, that was kinda my hang-up, because I just wanted to make sure. We get real sensitive waterways around here, because anywhere, you don't want any pollutants going into your water. So, we don't want in ours either.
And just so you know, when we issue a special permit, it does come with conditions to address the concerns that we have and with everyone else. So just so you know, there will be things in there.
I do agree with the lighting though, you should probably go with more of a spotlight lighting. It's probably affordable LED lighting, were you gonna address that?
So the lights in complaint with the lights on the building, already gone. The lights across the street, I don't, I don't know if we'll reuse them, to be honest. So that's the, the complaint previously with Spencer signs and stuff like that, which is obviously gone off the building now. So I, I don't see it obviously being an issue if it's not there. So that, anything they have complained about recently, we try to address like any of them, so like.
But there will be conditions in the decision about lighting hours of operation.
It's actually called, what's that, when you're, and light onto somebody else's property, it's, um?
Flooded.
Yeah, well, it's a flood lake, but it's called, is it, um?
Seeped or something, yeah.
Yeah, there's a technical term for it, you shouldn't be doing it. You wouldn't want somebody putting somebody's spotlight on their house, pointed at your house, or your windows, so.
I think the spotlight's where they go to before cameras go good, and now cameras, it's like protection at night, right? So I think, I'd rather invest in a security system than put lights everywhere, so save myself some money that way.
Previous me, at the previous meeting, we discussed the fundraising events that they would be hosting. They had discussed that at the meeting, we need to know if there are, how to approach that? What are the limitations, does it require a special permit for that, for an activity? What's parking gonna be like, is it gonna be in that lot? Is it gonna extend past six o'clock on Saturday?
For any special events?
For special events.
They may have.
Yes, but they brought up last.
So if they're gonna do anything beyond their special permit, they would have to come back to the board and request permission to do that for any, even if it's a temporary change or whatever, or just if. We set, say, we set the hours at five o'clock, and their hours of operation, they say, well, we would request that, that, you know, be changed and for this event that we wanna have. Then they can bring it to the board, and we can grant that or turn it down and say, no, you have to be done at five o'clock. As far as their parking, they have eighty-four parking spaces that are, that are there for that area, so they could use up eighty-four parking spaces in that area, in their business. You know, they're gonna wanna do advertising, things like that.
Self-employed.
Yeah, they, as anybody would wanna do to try to raise business awareness. You know, they might wanna say, hey, we're gonna have a cookout, and, you know, do something like that, and have nice cars there, or whatever, to help support their business. Yeah, a car show or something like that. You know, it's probably within there, but if you're gonna get food, and you do food, you're gonna do board health, and you're gonna do all that other stuff, because that gets into other issues.
This is the time to bring it up.
Oh, yeah, so there are concerns, and bring them up now so we can address them, yes.
We run an e-commerce company, I, John, please, John, sorry.
That's right, so we can record it.
We, our company's e-commerce, they're ninety-nine point nine percent of our sales are all online, doing events on our property for marketing, like zero percent chance. Working, I believe it was the first time I came in here, someone, one of you guys on the board, had mentioned the community being a carval community, and I believe that's where the fundraiser car event idea had, yeah, had came from, was more so in referral to be supportive of the community, if it's something that's gonna be a nuisance. I, we do a lot of fundraising events that we attend and donate a ton of money and stuff like that, and just because we're small business owners, communities, everything. But like, it's not necessary for us to do it, if it's gonna hurt us, I'm trying to better the community. I feel like we've been trying to prove that this whole time, but, so. If there's gonna be a pain, then so be it, I'm just trying to help the town.
And I think one of the keys of that is just communication between you and the town and the neighbors, really, communication.
My question is, if you were to do something with that, say you were gonna do a car event, and you're gonna have that, is it the concern of having a car event, or you would like to have notice or? Like if they gave, like, put it out in advance notice saying, hey, it's gonna be this, say it's gonna be on this, this sad day, October, whatever, this day, and they told you like two months in advance that this, this was gonna be out there, would that be the issue, or is it the fact of the event?
Really, the type of neighbor I was with Spencer's, was when I saw something happening in their lot, I recorded it. I walked over, I told them about some.
And I'm sure these guys would wanna know what's going on if this strange people in their parking lot.
That's a relationship that I'm expressing to you.
Last time we left here, I walked outside, I took you to give me a list of everything you didn't like. You never did that for anything you mentioned.
No, you have, I have, for the record, yes, yes, yes.
So you guys gotta address the board.
We're on, we're, we're basically on the same page. I mean, we have an open house to sell our pottery once a year, and there's going to be somebody who's going to park in their lot. I'm not sure if they're gonna get ticked off at me because of that, but no, we're in a neighborhood.
They could be simple communication, we're having something, people may park there, is that okay with you guys?
We're in a neighborhood, the neighbors, we're in a relationship, what can we do?
What I think when things go wrong is, for example, if you're gonna do something from ten AM to four PM, and then suddenly it's eight o'clock and you're still there making noise, that I think is not appropriate. But, you know, if it's within the hours, I think everything will be happy.
Well, they're gonna get some customer that's gonna show up at Open Pipes, and it's not their fault, because they didn't know he was there, he was showing up, so no, it's, that's understandable, understandable too.
That's why we have police.
Well, I'm not even gonna call the cops on that, because the guy, it's gonna be a memory in two days.
I could tell you this.
You know, communication between the business and the neighbors, both ways, can make things go a lot better.
That's what, that's what it is.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
So with the loud exhausts, I could tell you that State Police Academy is right down the street, and there's a lot of troopers around, and that is like their go-to thing for a lot of these vehicles, so.
Well, I don't know where the cops are gonna park after they fill the lot across the street, because that's where the ladies in town sit.
Well, we're hoping they do really good business, that's the point of it.
But I think the police will park wherever they want, yeah, one of those.
High drive way.
Possibly, possibly, okay. Anything else? All right, so we're looking for more information, okay.
And they already have it, so it's not.
Right, so it'll be submitted to us, all right, but.
It's there, they're just gonna bring it to us.
So do we need to continue for two weeks?
The question, yeah.
Or continue next meeting, or are we good, are you good?
I'm good, I'm good to vote.
Okay. So do you wanna debate him now on that one? So just remember, when we vote, then we have so much time to give you a letter of all our conditions and what we've talked about for conditions too, that we set on this.
Yeah, there's gonna be a whole list, I mean, I've made, I've made a list as we talked, other various things, and then we'll, we'll discuss this too. Okay.
Chairman, if you just wanna do one more round in case?
Oh, yeah, that's true. Anyone else have a comment, here or in Facebook land, or Zoom? Okay, I think we're good, okay. Can I have a motion?
So now is the motion to close it?
Close the public hearing.
And then we do a, in the next meeting, we do a final discussion, we look at the plans, and then we vote.
Right. So I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Eric Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Ed Long to get aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed. And we will, at our next meeting, we'll do our discussion and vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So at this point, there, there's no more?
Public input.
No more discussion, discussion is closed.
We got all the information, we got all their concerns, we got all the questions. You're gonna provide us with that, little plans that we were talking about, and then we're gonna sit next time. We talk only ourselves, you can come in, but you, there's no say, or public can come in and watch us and listen to us, but there's no more say, it's just us, the board, and then that day, if everything goes well, we vote, and you got it.
Can I have one question?
Yes.
Why, we're too, sorry, is that a week from today?
The next meeting?
The next meeting, which is. Let's set that since we're here.
We got this spot.
No, no, no.
It's early, we need to.
So the fourteenth, yep.
And then?
Oh, no, it's Columbus Day.
Probably be the twenty-first then.
Correct.
Is that a good day for everybody?
It's okay with me.
I'm good with that.
You okay with that?
I'm fine, I may be from Zoom now, maybe, but I'll be here.
All right, so it would be on the twenty-first.
Yeah, it's very important, because there's only four of us.
Right.
I would, I definitely would.
Yeah, if you're in Zoom, it's very important, if you're not here.
No, I, I understand.
Is it possible to do it next Monday?
Next Monday? You talked about the seventh?
I cannot do it next Monday.
I'm just looking at, putting off three more weeks of.
No, I understand.
We know it's kinda.
I understand, but.
See, we're all, we're all volunteer board, and it's hard to get everybody together at one time.
If it wasn't Columbus Day, we wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah.
But the fact it's a holiday kinda throws us off, so the, the next meeting would be on the twenty-first.
And then my last question was?
Even the seventh would be too soon?
Yes.
Because we're gonna start drafting.
The decision.
Yeah, it takes a little longer to do than just one week.
So my last question, and obviously it would never happen, is, say you were, gave us business hours from like ten AM to eleven AM, right? Just some absurd thing, I'm assuming, hopefully you would allow me to do, but just not forbid, you gave me, is there, is that, that's that, and take or leave it, or?
No, no. There, there's some.
So the conditions are negotiable?
No.
No, not really.
Not really, but we're not gonna be that.
We're not setting you up for failure.
We're not gonna set you up, we're gonna help you with your business, we just wanna protect the neighbors.
So if you have kids, so.
No, I tell you, you can be open for half an hour on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
No, I know, it's not, it's not that.
If there's an appeal, there's an appeal.
If there was like one thing where we asked or something.
But I don't, I don't think this board is gonna screw you up with ridiculously hours. We're just protecting, you know, late hours and very early in the.
And that's actually another point, that when the decision is given, you do have a period of time to appeal the decision, so. But no, we're gonna try and be reasonable here.
I'm just curious more, so.
I'm pretty sure you gave us your business hours in our first meeting, where you guys said it would be normal business hours.
But you know, keep something in mind, we want you to succeed.
But again, we can't take on new information now, because we've already voted and closed it, so we can't do anything more now.
Maybe it was a bad example, I was just more so asking like if you guys come here and say this, and it's like, that's it, you know what I mean? I'm sure if there was, like, again.
You can appeal.
Just one thing where it's like, oh, we're open for a twenty-minute difference.
Right, but remember, we want you to succeed. You wanna, you wanna be part of the community, we want you to be part of the community.
Very happy and excited.
Okay, then our next meeting would be on the twenty-first, and we'll discuss it and vote then.
Thank you.
I just wanna confirm with you guys, these are our copies?
Yeah.
Your copies, and back?
Twelve, twelve might be a little much.
Well, you're changing them, right? You're gonna add? Yeah. Do you want this copy still, or are you good? We got one right here.
Didn't want you to get all the way home and be like, where's that big roll of plans?
Thank you guys, I'll be leaving.
Yeah, we need to have twenty days to appeal after the decision, your decision is done, yeah.
You just wrote down a lot of the main things that we were concerned about. Cause then we can re-address those.
And we can go through the.
I take a freakish amount of notes and then whittle it down, but that way I have something if we need to.
You got your hand on it.
Yeah.
No, not the other one.
No, that was mine, but that's alright, you can take it.
Are you right?
I wrote all over this one, so yeah.
I mean, Rex is better than that.
Onto Agilitas.
Yeah, okay, so, next item is Agilitas Solar Facilities. Um, we also have O'Reilly Talbot and Oakham, who is our peer reviewer, and uh, conservation is on too. So why don't we start with Agilitas, um, just talk about, so we're talking about the repairs to the spillway or the overflow.
Nick's on there, I just seen him.
Yep. So I would say let's start with Nick.
Alright, good evening, uh, Nick Fassandola, Level Design Group, here on behalf of Agilitas Energy, uh, developer of the solar facility up on Beaman Road. Few weeks back, uh, let's say three, four weeks ago, we submitted through Agilitas, I believe Alex Ramalard, who's also on the call, submitted a plan for the repair of the spillway over on, uh, what we're calling Basin Three. I can pull that up if you guys want me to or if you have it there, alright.
You're looking for it?
That's it. So essentially, uh, you know, as the board is aware, uh, we had an, uh, issue with the spillway, uh, for this basin. We also submitted, uh, a letter, uh, from some investigation work that we did, we did a few preliminary test pits. Uh, we didn't wanna destroy the entire basin berm, but, um, you know, we did some work to try and understand what caused this recent, uh, deposit of material, uh, into the buffer zone and wetland south of the basin berm. So that was also submitted along with the, um, proposed plan detailing, uh, what we're looking to do with the spillway. So long story short, um, we're gonna rebuild the spillway again. Doing all the proper testing, uh, that's required for the basin berm. Um, and we are proposing, uh, at the top of the spillway, so what's gonna be at the surface be a new product that's recently come out over the past few years. Um, it's a product called Concrete Canvas, it's essentially, uh, a geotextile product. Um, you know, comes in a roll, so after the area is subgr- you know, the, the base of the, um, basin berm is graded. This, uh, material gets rolled out over the top and it is then saturated. And when it dries, it essentially becomes, uh, concrete. So we did look at, you know, making this spillway fully concrete, but given the length and the size and the slope, it was gonna be, always gonna be difficult to get concrete to set on that three to one slope as you're going down towards the, um, the bottom of the wetland there in the, uh, buffer zone, um, on the southerly side of that slope. So that's why we did a little investigation and, um, you know, found this product, which they use on very large construction sites, um, you know, to address, uh, erosion of hills, uh, a, a variety of other things. Um, you know, areas that are difficult to stabilize, uh, is where this product is deployed. So it comes in a roll, it's about three to three and a half, four feet wide, you overlap it, um, when you lay it down, uh, put pins in, um, to hold it down. And, uh, at the ends, you dig trenches and we're gonna fill those with concrete to kinda secure the lip of the material. We're also gonna be putting in, um, uh, concrete curb at the center of the top of the berm to really define that top of, uh, the berm in the center. And it's gonna help anchor the concrete canvas in, along the top of the berm as well. Overall, we think it's a, a good system, it's gonna protect that slope, um, and, you know, prevent any further washouts of this area. Um, you know, part of the work that we're gonna do is obviously dig out the existing berm and reconstruct that from the, you know, bottom of the pond up, replacing the core material, using proper material, getting it all properly compacted. That's all pretty much standard from the, um, initial details that were provided for the initial construction of the basin berm. It's, uh, the only, you know, major difference here is this concrete canvas that we're specifying. Um, it, it is a new product, uh, so if there's any questions on it, I'd be more than happy than, uh, to answer any questions. We submitted this a little while back, we haven't received any comment or input from, from OTO, uh, I know, uh, I believe Alex from Agilitas had a site meeting with Joyce, she provided a few comments which we're gonna, uh, address. With, I'm sure she'll share those, uh, with the board, with, um, the installation here. So we'll, uh, get all that put together, but we just wanted to make sure there's no other comments from the planning board or from OTO, uh, before we made any changes to this plan. What else do we have here? Well, at the bottom of the, the slope, we're gonna have a little riprap dispersion air, dispersion area. Just because when the water's coming through the spillway, we wanna make sure that before it gets to, uh, the wetland buffer, that there's an area for that water to, uh, disperse and slow down. So as you can see on this sheet that's pulled up, uh, bottom center, uh, there's gonna be a riprap section at the bottom of the concrete canvas to kinda, um, dissipate that flow that would come off the spillway and spread it out, um, through that area, so you don't have a, a lot of water running very quickly, um, into the resource area.
Yeah, we do have, we got some info from OTO. What? The ten remarks.
The comments from OTO?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But my, hold on, let me stop sharing and see if that fixes it, okay. Okay, give me a sec here.
Is OTO on tonight?
Yeah.
Why don't you just have them say?
Yeah, getting there. Alright, Steven, you wanna, um, I'll try and bring this up again.
Yep, Rich, you ready for me?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll try and bring this up again.
Okay.
But go ahead and start.
So one.
Our, when we first saw this, you know, our, our comment, we had looked into this product before, again, like Nick had said, it is a newer, newer product. Um, it is not something that we are familiar with, um, we've checked around and our, our, um, our contacts aren't familiar with it either, so that's sort of like our comments, we have this kinda overarching, um, part to it where, you know, we're just trying to work out and see, see the durability of this material, how it's gonna function in, in this sort of environment. And one of our, our comments is, is Nick, I don't know if, if, where this material comes from, if there's a rep or anything, but is there a way we could get some sort of, um, could they provide like an example, is, has it been used in this area, in our, like, in our freeze thaw cycle? That sort of, um, they could demonstrate a project that it's been used on. And also, part of this is with these sort of barriers and liners, it, it usually comes down to, you know, the successful use of these coming down to like the installation process and how it's placed, and in this case, it sounds like this product will have a number of joints in place and just to make sure it's put down properly and hydrated appropriately. Um, so there's a couple of comments on, on our, on this sheet here that's in front of you and then also on the plans that we had marked up. Just talking about is the, has a con- does a contractor have any experience installing this? Um, and should there be like a rep onsite, the concrete canvas rep onsite that could provide some, some guidance on installing this, this, this product?
I'm wondering if this has ever been used for a basin for this particular type of application. Well, what is the product exactly designed for? Right. I don't know if Nick knows any.
Nick, can you, like, is this the right application for this? Has this been used on basins before?
Yeah, no, it, it, it is the right application for it, there are many applications, uh, for this type of product. You know, the general application is stabilization, uh, but yes, it, it can be used for, for this type of application. To Steve's point, uh, I have been in touch with the, with the rep, uh, the Northeast rep for this product. Um, I can pass that info along to OTO if they'd like to, if they have any specific questions, uh, they want to send over to the rep, um, you know, the product I believe is manufactured in England. Um, and if you go to their website, I mean, there's hundreds of, um, cases, they call it, you know, where detailing different types of installations and the product used and, um, information on, uh, the product itself. Now, um, you know, it is a new product, um, but it's a generally straightforward product to use, um, you know, as long as it is installed correctly. Um, and we passed along all the installation manuals and, and brochures to the, uh, contractor and they've taken a look at it and they feel confident that they can, um, get this installed properly.
My question is, why are we choosing, why are you choosing this product over something that's been proven to have worked on other sites or other projects? It seems like you're choosing duct tape over something that's.
Used previously and has lasted.
See the analogy there with duct tape here, um, you know, this is a product that is essentially stabilizes and forms a rock hard concrete surface to it. Um, you know, and given the issues had, that we, you know, we've had in the past with this basin, um, through that area. You know, I did feel that this was the, uh, was a good product to use here. There are other ways of solving this problem that is, that is correct. You know, I feel that.
The other ways, Nick? Well, I guess my question.
Why did you choose this way over some other way?
Uh, well, this way, um, it's, should be relatively straightforward to install, so after the area is graded and, you know, the basin's properly reconstructed, you know, you, you lay this material right over the top of the basin berm material, stake it down and then saturate it, you know, this, this product itself should be installed in about two to three days max. So it's not like it's, you're, um, having to form up a large concrete spillway. And then pour concrete in sections and get a pumper truck and get it up, uh, and get material and concrete um, over there to create a, a solid spillway. So, you know, ease of installation, albeit it's a new product, um, it should go in relatively quickly. You know, they could probably lay a couple thousand square feet of this in a day. You know, once they, once they get going, and then after it's laid down, you properly saturate it and it turns into concrete, rock hard concrete.
So Nick, how?
This, after it's been, um, hydrated and turns into concrete, what's the thickness of it?
It's a couple inches thick, it's not a very, um, thick material.
Is it gonna be able?
Have an equipment go up there to clean out the basin if you need to?
This area.
Through here?
Yes, where it's.
If you need to clean up.
Equipment you're bringing through there. Uh, you know, a small, you know, rubber track excavator would be, you know, fine, uh, through that, any major work to be done to the basin, you know, you're probably looking at, um, not driving over this material.
So that means that we should probably consider having the, um, the O and M manual changed if you did use this, so, um, whoever is in charge of doing maintenance in the future knows that they shouldn't put their pickup truck on it or drive on this, on the top of the basin. There's limitations. So whoever's responsible for any maintenance in the future, that would be addressed in the O and M. I'm just like trying to put the pieces together, so if this is actually approved, then there's gonna be no future problem.
Right, so honestly, it's.
Product and it hasn't been tested. You know, eh, we're, we're being the test group. And are we willing to be the test group again when we've been going through this basin for the past?
Two years?
Two years now, um, how about we just fix it right and stop experimenting and just get it done with? I understand this is probably a cheaper, quicker fix, like duct tape, but, you know, how about we fix it right this time? Cause this is, this, we, we, this is getting to be insanity where we're doing the same thing over and over and over and you're still not able to get this basin fixed after we've been telling you for years to get it fixed and do it right. Just my take on it.
So, would you mind if I asked a couple of questions?
No, go ahead, that's Joyce, just state your name and.
My name is Joyce, I hawker, um, I'm the Chair of War and Conservation Commission. And, um, we have been doing a cleanup onsite because the basin, um, uh, berm had, um, failed twice, uh, once was significant, the second miner, uh, immaterial ended up in the wetlands on a, in a stream, uh, they've done an exceptional job cleaning it up and they had a really great team, so kudos for that, but nobody wants, again, nobody wants to do this again. Nick, I am wondering a couple of things, um, one of them is, um, I was, most of the sites in town have used a betonite liner, uh, that's keyed into the basin. And, um, a couple of the sites that have also had basin failures. They use the betonite liner and that has been, uh, tried and true and very successful. Uh, those other projects and they're, you know, since then, there's been no problems with that, so I was kind of hoping you would use that because it has been tried and true. Um, and tied to that is that the installation of this, Rich, can you zoom in on, um, trying to think, uh, the one on the bottom?
So where do?
And then scroll down, yeah, yeah, and just keep on going up a little bit. And then scroll down. Yeah, yeah, and just keep on going up a little bit. So I can see the one on the bottom.
Okay, so just wait before you go on, I'm going to point out that the red are comments from O T O.
Go ahead.
Okay, so. On the left hand side, you key it in towards the top. And one of the things I see in that is a point of failure. If there's water that's pushing against it, there's an opportunity for for leakage. And I know that I see that it's. There's some material that would be put in there, but I have concerns and I'm wondering why that just doesn't goes down and why isn't it keyed into? Like in the basin underneath.
Into the top of the berm?
Oh, I don't have cursor. I don't, so can you, yeah, like. So if you if you had a betonite liner over the berm, it would go all the way down the front. Of the berm and then you would key it into the basin bottom. You know, like a couple of feet into the basin bottom. And so that way, any pressure that's pushed against the berm. Especially during heavy waters, there's no chance of it leaking into the berm and knocking it over. So right now, this is pretty high up. You're keying it in right at a point where water and will be. If it's you, if water is overflowing on the spillway, there's there's a pressure point there. There's a point of failure. So I just have a concern about that. I don't know if you understand what I'm saying. Stephen wrote a note about extending the the cement material. Down to the bottom, down to the basin.
Yeah, Nick, I think I think.
What Joyce is also trying to say here is.
That extending that that concrete canvas on the, I'm going to call it the inlet side of the spillway. All the way down to to the bottom of the basin, basically the floor of the basin. So that way. There's no potential for water, say, to try and get underneath that.
Right in here.
Yeah, okay, no, we can, we can look at that. Yeah, that that seems pretty straightforward to run that down. The basin's only four feet deep, so.
Right.
It's an extra 10 feet of material that that's not overly complicated. You know, kind of circling back to Joyce's comment there. I mean, this isn't a betonite liner, so you know, the the whole purpose of it, it you wouldn't bury this into the basin. Berm, you know, feet, you know, this is a top treatment that. Forms an impermeable. You know, coating to the spillway. So water will not penetrate through this material. But I don't understand the the concern with the that the overlap there. And, you know, we can, we can easily address that by running it down down the spillway.
I I think that because the basin. In the first instance, when the basin failed largely, it it was because water. Entered the. Berm somewhere and caused erosion and then something significant. So. Any opportunity we have to prevent water from entering inside of the berm. I mean, that was my concern and it looked like this would be a window. Maybe however slim it would be an opportunity for water to get in there. I see why you're doing it, you know, the material on the top of the berm had been washed away at some point. Very strange, like why that happened in the first place, it would be interesting to know. But anything that we can do that would prevent water getting into the berm. Because it's supposed to be a dam would be helpful.
No, I agree. And, you know, I did consider multiple different options here. You know, and it to me, it's it's mostly water coming through the top of this of the spillway. I don't know. Particularly, I don't have the exact reason why, but I feel, I mean, I don't think the the berm failed from. The inside, right? So that's why I didn't go with the betonite liner. You know, I think it's mostly water coming, working its way through over the top of the spillway through the rip rap that's there. You know, with the betonite liner, you're essentially that that goes down, then you have material to over the top. The betonite liner would be two feet from grade from how I would do it because you still have to. Cover the liner properly so you don't puncture it. And then you have to put stone and then rip rap over the top.
Right.
So, you know, that that that's if you're having, you know, I didn't go with that because I think that's a solution if you're having infiltration. Through the berm itself, which I don't think that's.
First, on the first failure, there was infiltration in the berm and it wasn't only from the top.
Correct, yes. I do, there was water from there. You know, I believe it was likely maybe a fence post or two. Water made its way around those fence posts and eroded that, you know, a lot of water came through that spillway. You know, when we were forcing water through it, you know, we had a lot of high intensity rainstorms and. I think I'm not going to go on record and say that's exactly what happened, but I think that's how that water got in there. The second time around, I don't feel that water made it through the. We'll call it the center part of the core. You know, I was out, I was onsite, they installed the core, we dug a test pit. The core materials there right to the top. That's why I'm I've chosen this. Duct tape, as Dave likes to call it, something that it's a surface treatment. That essentially it's going to form, you know, once it's installed and it has to be installed properly, that is correct. A rock hard spillway where water will not penetrate through. And these are sheets, but they are installed, so they're overlapping. So as you crest the spillway. Water will, you know, they're almost tiled like a roof. So that's that's how it's installed. That's one thing I'd have to take a look at when. Possibly running it down that side slope into the basin. Because at some point now water's coming up and, you know, you have the shingles of the material. Through there. So I don't know if that is going to be possible. I'll take a look at it. You know, if if that's, if we can't do that, I would then start the concrete canvas, say, you know, on the. The level, the level top of the basin berm, if that makes sense.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, I think what we need here is a a surface treatment. And like I said, my other option was a full on concrete spillway. To protect the top of this, where I believe we had our failure. Issue running along that the downhill slope towards the wetland here.
So what happens if this gets undercut again?
If the water gets through and gets under this thing, it's just going to collapse, right? I mean, it's going to be pretty heavy.
If the water, I don't understand the question, if water goes through the spillway berm?
If it comes through here.
What it's done.
We have bigger problems than we have today. I mean, it shouldn't be doing that.
And I don't, I don't believe that's what occurred in this recent. We'll call this round two basin berm material washout. You know, if you have that condition, you're going to have a failure, just like you would in any other basin. If water is migrating through the center of the, we'll call it the core of the berm.
Jared, a few questions.
So Nick, is your installer, has he, has your installer ever installed this product before?
It's not my installer, but the onsite contractor, I I can't say for sure. I know they. Are capable.
So they haven't installed this product before then. So they have no experience installing this product.
It's a, it's a rather new product, but it goes down just like any other type of. Membrane type product which you're overlaying. So I'm sure that they have installed other types of liner products in the past. But have they installed this exact product? Probably not. But they are professionals.
It seems like.
This is getting into another patchwork type situation. I I'd prefer to just see the berm fixed correctly. Well, Joyce gave a solution with the betonite. Why, why isn't that being explored as the option? Why aren't we just doing that? Instead of reinventing the wheel again to see if the wheel works. Because we don't know if this product's going to work. You keep on saying that it should. But we've seen this basin fail twice so far on things you say it shouldn't be doing, but it keeps on doing it. So how about we just fix it for the third strike and do it right the final time? Use the betonite product if that's what's being recommended. I don't know if O T O agrees with that. Analysis, but let's fix it right.
So Nick, why, again, why aren't you, why are you opposed to using a betonite liner?
I just explained my my position on that. I, you know, that's more of. That's for more seepage through the basin berm. Like I said, with the betonite liner. That's going to be installed a few feet below the surface of the basin. Spillway elevation. I don't feel that that's that's the problem here.
You've seen it, Nick. We've seen it. We we were all there. We've seen the seepage coming from the basin.
There was seepage at the bottom, right?
There was seepage at the bottom. We seen it. We knew it was going to fail. We questioned that. You guys reassured us that, no, 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 that's groundwater, when in fact it wasn't. All right, so.
Bush here. I I think we've spent a lot of time on an experimental product. But why keep on experimenting on this basin and just do it right? Let's, let's use a product that works in this region.
Stephen, do you, do you want to go through, I don't know if you want to go through all these, probably not, but do you want to go through maybe some key ones? Cause eventually, what what I, what we'd like you to do is give this to Nick and Agilitus. With your comments and maybe they can respond to them. So what what ones? I don't know, what three or four do you think are most important to mention?
I I think. The the first couple of comments that I had with the use of the product and. That would be great, Nick, if you could pass along the rep information. That way we can just reach out to them. I think those are. Those are kind of some big ones. The other ones in that section that that Joyce, we were looking at with Joyce earlier. Looking at extending that that down to the bottom of the basin on the inlet side. Or Nick, to to what you had said, if the overlap doesn't work, is there something else that to do there just to? Address in case water does get through there or just to minimize the potential for it. I I would say probably the other one is on the outlet side. Nick, I know, I know you had said you were going to add a. The like a pad there down at the bottom to slow the flow down. I would just say, you know, one of our comments here is to, you know, consider like, is there, is a splash pool needed along with the rip? Rip rap pad just to slow down the flow. And then how does that? That transition work between the concrete canvas and the rip rap pad? Just to to minimize, you know, that that hard transition. So. You know, should that concrete fill around that crack? It's not, doesn't end up being like a pathway for water. Could, is there a way to sort of overlap them there or? Something along those lines.
This is a point of erosion right here, right? I mean, this, the water's coming.
Thirty feet, right? Over a 10 foot height and then it's going to hit this, isn't this going to erode? Even if it's concrete.
Maybe that transition is further down at the toe of the slope and not on the side, but it's just, just a point to. To consider.
Then we have to fix it.
Anything else, Stephen?
I got a couple.
I I would. I'll leave it at those for now. Those were kind of the big ones. I think the rest of the comment comments are pretty self explanatory and then we can. If something comes up, we can talk about it.
So, so Nick, two things that kind of stood out. When some of us looked at this.
First of all, this collar. Why is this collar in the middle of the berm and not here? Because right now you can get water. Running along the pipe, right? And into the into the berm itself. So why isn't this collar out here somewhere?
That's just a typical. Detail, I mean, that's just how it was drawn. Anti-seepage collar, yes, we can move it to the other side if that's preferred. Those were installed. On the other side of the basin where we actually have the outlet pipes. So I mean, I don't think that's. I mean, in general, it's not applicable to what we're, the work we're doing here.
And then I think this, this is another important comment that. You're not going to redo this whole basin part, right? You're just going to redo what you need to do to get this thing in. This comment here makes it sound like you're going to almost redo the whole thing. So I think.
The detention basin typical section. So that's just the. Typical section for the construction of the basin. Just to from the the plan that was previously approved. So that would have already been done.
Go ahead.
Yep.
I know concrete canvas, I know how they work and how they use them. I know it's it's an option for a solution, but we're typically, we're literally against nature. You know, it could, it could work, it could not work. Do they guarantee that if it doesn't work, they're going to come back and fix it?
Ooh, Agilitus are the manufacturer.
That's an open question.
Oh, okay. I guess is there any, is this suitable for the application? Is there any guarantee of suitability? Ashley, I'll get to it in a second.
For the application. I mean, there's no guarantee for for this as there was for the original basin.
Berm, you know, alls I can say is that, you know, Agilitas and and myself are committed to. Getting this fixed and feel that this product and this repair. Is the best solution for what we have here today. I mean, obviously, the developer, they're not happy about having to do this for a second time. You know, it's very costly. You know, we're not playing games here and and throwing mud against the wall and hoping it sticks. You know, this, this product wasn't released last month. I mean, it's been out for a few years. And if you go to the website, do the homework. Look at the examples. There's hundreds of installations all around the world. This is a worldwide product that we're specifying here and. You know, alls I recommend is that you go to the website. Take a look at some of the installations, how it's used. There's different types of products, so it it may be a little. Complicated, but overall. It's it's a very straightforward product and there's plenty of examples, photos, detailed summaries. On how it's been used, where it's been used, what it's been used for. And, you know, we have had discussions with the supplier and the rep. To make sure that the product's available, that. Had discussions with the supplier and the rep to make sure that the product's available, that. Um, the application is correct, that we're. Specing it properly and once, uh, you know, prior to ordering, we're gonna. Um, have a meeting with the contractor and the, the, the sales rep. Um, they have installation videos. That there's all sorts of resources available. Um, I mean, are they gonna send a, a rep out from concrete canvas for? An installation of two thousand square feet? No, they're not. I mean, this is a relatively small order. People. Install, you know, tens of thousands of square feet of this product to stabilize. All sorts of different areas, slopes, spillways, things of that nature. So, I mean, I can pretty much guarantee that the rep isn't gonna come. Um, make a special visit and be on site with us while we're putting in our, you know, ten rolls. But they are available. Uh, we will be working with them um. To ensure that the contractor's comfortable with this type of installation. Um, you know, if you read the manuals, it's relatively straightforward. Lay the product down, get the, you know, it's all in the um, subbase preparation, get it nice and smooth. Make sure to install during dry weather, dig your anchor trenches. Stake it down and you know, fill those trenches with concrete or material. I think we're um specing concrete here, so it. Is secured a little bit better and you know, the material will be placed in a day. And then it gets saturated and then by the next day, it's as hard as concrete. That's how the product works. So. To and provide them, you know, any other information that, that they need. Um. They can contact the rep themselves, uh, but this is a product that. Will be used a lot more in the area in, in, you know, in the future. Um. I mean, I don't think there's anything being, you know, anything wrong with being one of the first people to use it in this area. Um, that doesn't make the product any less viable. You know, a good product's a good product. It serves its purpose. For the application and the, the, the problem we're trying to solve here.
Let Ashley go?
Yeah.
Okay, Ashley? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Ashley from O T O. Um, Nick, thanks for that. One of, I had a couple of points. First to kinda jump into what you're saying. Um, we did look into it a little bit. We do have it. We talking to the, a rep would be great. Um, and everything we saw, we couldn't find too much in kinda cold weather regions. Um, and when we reached out, so we didn't see too much of that. So it would be interesting to talk to the rep. I do know. Um, when we looked at it, the installation, like you say, is gonna be a real important part. Um, as well as it looked like the storage, right? It looked like, you know, it had to, to store it properly and all that and, and bring it. So. I think they'll have guidelines on that. Um, what we'd recommend is, I'm not sure if you'll have, you know, a full-time rep or that there will be. You know, someone out there kinda paying attention to the installation in addition um, to the contractor. Um, also, I think of, an important note is you have in here that you um. The, it'll be de- deconstructed, correct, to a, to a certain point. And I think what, you know. A key thing will be whatever you're, you know, looking to see of uh, you know, kinda confirming. Your assumptions of how it failed by, you know, the overtopping and kinda going through, you know, finding a pathway through that, that that is. You know, basically determined and that kinda falls into that the surface covering's really gonna help solve the problem, right? So I think a, a key point will be, you know, the observation during the deconstruction. Just to make sure things all fall into place with what, you know, we're, we're thinking what needs to be fixed here. Um, question was how, you know. What are your thought, like, how much is gonna be deconstructed? I know it's a spillway, but, or is it just, you know, you're pulling up the rip rap? Kinda go into the, the disturbing area. I just was curious if, you know, how much is going to be reconstructed of the berm itself?
So all the rip rap will come out. Um, there's rip rap that kinda extends down into the basin. That will come out. Everything across the top um, will come out and then um, you know, at a minimum, I think we were looking at, it, you know. Pulling material out to um, the basin floor and seeing where we are at that point. Um, to make sure that we have, you know, good compaction, the right material, the core is in place. Um. Things of that nature. And then um, on the backside, once the rip rap and the. The, you know, mit- um, the mixed up material that you kinda specified. Once all that's pulled out, then we'll bring in additional material on that backside of the slope uh, towards the, we'll call it the outlet side. Get that all properly compacted on, you know, it's still the basin berm. I know people think the berm's that ten se- that, that ten foot wide section where the core is. But the berm runs all the way down till we hit um, native material. Um, so we'll just kind of. Look at some of that material. We'll have to bring the grade up uh, through there. After all, I think there's about two feet of rip rap and maybe a little bit more. On that backside, so um, we'll fill that area in. But as far as the. You know, looking at the interior berm, the side uh, where the um, water is being retained. I told the contractor, you know, let's, let's get to the bottom of the basin and, and see what, 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 what we, what we're looking at at that point. If it's. Looks horrible and there's no core or key material, then yeah, well, and, and I'm planning on being on site. Like, there are notes that detail that. Um, um, on the uh, first page of the plan. And you know, if it looks horrible, then I'll tell them to keep going and take more material out and we'll be rebuilding it. Um, from natural grade. Uh, there is a significant amount of fill. I mean, I think from. The backside of that slope, it's about an eight foot high fill through that area. So um, before you hit natural, natural grade. So there's a significant amount of, of material there. But um, yeah. So right now, just to answer your question, you know, to the basin floor, which is about four feet, um, four to five feet or so. And then see what it looks like from there. I mean, we'll let you guys know when we're out there doing it and if you wanna send somebody from the office out to. Um, come take a look and uh, you know, obviously if I see something that looks way off, I'll, you know. Also notify you guys and have you come out and say, nah, you know, I think we're gonna go a little bit further and, and keep digging this out. Um, but. You know, like I said before, I don't think it's that center part of the basin because it did get rebuilt and. We were out there, we had compaction testing. So I think it's more the, the top dressing and, and the, the backside. Um, that really led to this issue. But you know, the only way to figure that out is to, you know, get in there and properly dig it out and, and do a proper investigation.
You all set, Ash?
Yeah, I, I am.
Okay, can I go to Joyce or does anybody?
Um, my question's been answered.
Okay, Joyce?
Oh yeah, I just want, um, Nick, can you clarify, you know, from a bird's eye view, from a plan view? Um, how? Far on either side of the spillway do you need to impact when you're, when you're working on this?
So the spillway top, we'll call it the uh, the crest of the berm. That's about ten feet wide. And so that area, I mean, we're, we're gonna pull all. The rip rap out of that gray rectangle right there. That's all, you know. Larger rip rap stone. So that whole area is gonna come out. So essentially all the way up to the existing uh. Hay bale silt fence line. From the bottom of the basin where I kinda had that temporary um, erosion control barrier, that little ring of. Yeah, X right there, all the way down to the other line of X's is what we're looking at. What I'm calling disturbing.
Side to side? On either side of it, just like a couple of feet on either side?
Yeah, a couple of feet. Like I said, I mean, that's, that's the plan. If, if for some reason we get in there and it, it looks absolutely horrible and. The wrong materials there and it's complete garbage, then we'll have to expand that. I mean, I don't feel that that's the case. Um, from some of the holes that we dug, like I said, we dug a few holes on the sides. You know, the goal was to try not to. Destroy the pond uh, because we had some work to do and. Um, you know, getting a design put together, have this meeting, have the, all these meetings. So I didn't, I wanted to leave the base and as functional as. Possible while we're doing all this. But um, yeah, I don't think we'll have to go too far out beyond. That area, maybe five feet on either side is what I'm anticipating right now.
Okay, yep. Alright, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
So Steven, where are you on your comments? Is this document all set or do you wanna?
Modifications?
Um, I, I think we're all set as far as.
As far as our comments on the document.
Alright, so can you?
That to Nick and um, I guess Alex maybe at Agilitus, right? And then do you want some written responses from Nick to some of these or are you just throwing these out for them to consider? What, what's your?
I mean, you, usually in our, you know, submittal review process, if, you know, we have comments and then it goes back and then. They can address the comments and just.
Yeah, that's true.
Incorporate them or put some sort of response next to it.
Yeah, that would be fair.
We can review that.
So Nick, is that?
Nick, is that okay? I mean, O T O is taking time.
This and they have some concerns and you've heard other concerns. So can you? Just give us something, some written responses to these?
Yeah, but uh, just, yeah, send the document over. We'll, we'll be sure to take a look at it and um. You know, make any tweaks. And uh, like, I think there's a formal letter too, so we'll, we'll write up a response uh, to the letter. And um, you know, make any uh, plan changes uh, that, that are necessary. And then also um. You know, run point with, with Steve, I guess, on um. I, like I said, I'll get him some more information on the product and I'll send him the uh, northeast uh. Representative for. Concrete Canvas. Uh, and then if uh, yeah, they can reach out or we can have a call with them, all, you know, all three parties if we want. Um, and go from there.
Alright.
So that sounds good. So um. Steven, can you be in touch then, once you get responses back and maybe talk to some people? Can you get back in touch with me and then I could? Disseminate the info and I guess we'll decide from there. If we want another meeting or something.
So, got a question. What, what's the timeline? For if you, if you're gonna install this product, Nick, when do you need to start to install it?
Hmm, uh, the sooner the better. Um, you know, I don't think any installation or repair would be. Well-suited for the winter. You know, you're just never gonna get the right conditions, whether you're. Uh, doing concrete or a liner, you know, on- once you hit winter conditions, it's gonna be difficult. Um. You know, we've recently, the last few years, we've had extended fall, so hopefully that's the uh, the case here. But um, you know, from what. We've discussed with the uh. Manufacturer, it's about a two-week lead time to get the material on site. So, you know, it is in stock in the United States Northeast. Um, and it would take about two weeks to get the quantity of material and, you know, fasteners and other small um. Um, items that come along with it. So um, you know, once, you know, say we, if we do get released to move on this. The order will be made, the contractor would mobilize, get out to the site, start doing the work, you know. Taking the berm and the rip rap down, uh, removing that rip rap, we'd start to.
Okay, Nick, thanks, thanks. You're getting long-winded here.
Sooner the better, but uh, it should only be like a couple of weeks to do everything. So um, that's the advantage of this product.
So, so can we?
My, my concern is our next meeting's the twenty-first. If we gave you the okay, you couldn't have your product till. Um, first week of November. Typically. Things start freezing up around then, probably not best conditions for pouring, but you never know, could be extended. I would just say, what's your plan B? What if we say no to this product and this, we determine this product is not gonna do what you're gonna do? And what's your plan B?
We'll come up with that?
Necessary.
Well, you're getting.
Time here because. If you don't have a plan B and we turn around on the twenty-first and say, yeah, no, we're not sold on this product. Rethink it.
Can, can you do something in the spring as opposed, can this sit? Through the winter? I mean, even if, even if you can't install this um. System because we get an early freeze or winter comes early, can this all sit until, you know, April or something?
The basin is, the overflow is compromised at this point?
Yeah.
So, you know, the question is, is that a good idea? And is there anything that we can do to move this along decision-making, like have a. Have a meeting next week on Monday?
Well, I don't know.
So O T O's gotta provide their, their document. Nick's gotta respond to the document. Then O T O is gonna talk to.
A week, a week is not gonna be enough.
Right?
And then the next week is a holiday.
Ashley and Steven, what do you, what do you think on turnaround time? I mean, the twenty-first is probably realistic.
Right.
Um, I'm already reaching out to Concrete Canvas to. See if we can have a meeting and learn a little bit more directly for them. So I figured I'd jump in and get that going. Nick, if you have your content, contact, please forward that as well, but. Figured I'd get something going. Um, if they, you know, respond with comments and, and we can talk to this um. You know, with the, a representative. Um, just to get a better feel for this product, I do understand now, I think Steve and I talked about, we understand now that this is a. You know, uh, erosion control and the rebuilding of the, the basin and deconstructing, looking at it will, you know, hopefully satisfy us that. The basin is constructed the way, you know, it should be and it's not a seepage problem through the basin and that this is an erosion, you know, a, a way to. You know, provide erosion control at the top. Um, so I think that one of the key points is gonna be learning about the application of this in a cold weather. Region um, and the installation. So. I think we could turn it around pretty quickly if they get comments, comments back and we learn a little bit more about this product. Sorry, Steven, I just figured I'd jump in, cause. You know, we don't have a lot of time, so.
Yeah, but, but I mean, it still seems like the twenty-first is gonna be.
Right, because we, if, we can't meet the fourteenth and I don't know that the seventh is.
And a lot of us aren't, aren't gonna be around during some of this time.
Right.
Yeah, let's, let's just do.
So the, the twenty-first is realistically the day.
Yeah.
For you to be able to do all your plans, make any adjustments or come back. My concern is. If we say no, then what is your plan B to go forward with something that you can do?
Well, he has three weeks to think about that.
Yeah, I, I, I think you should definitely have a plan B.
It might be good to have a plan B. I mean, if, if O T O talks to the reps and then they feel it's like, oh boy, I don't know about this, then.
Well, it's never been tested. You guys would be the first. Well, you wanna be the test subjects. I don't know if we wanna be the ones that are the first ones to test it in this region on something of this importance.
Yeah.
You know, we've, this is strike three. We've had this basin fill two times already. This is the third time that we're coming to bat to try to fix it. I, I don't think we're willing to take another risk.
Okay, but the twenty-first is the date.
Yeah.
Is everybody good with the twenty-first?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, hearing.
I'm good with it.
Hearing no objections. So um, okay, so let's. Communicate and then um, we'll see everybody back on the twenty-first.
Yeah, we'll make a decision then.
Okay. Any other final comments?
Nope.
Okay.
I will coordinate with Steve, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Just in the loop.
All right. I'll look forward to seeing the comments and marked up plan and we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night. Bye.
Bye.
All right. So I will stop sharing. Pin us. All right. So be the same agenda on the 21st, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Just make a copy and scratch out the date.
Saves you work.
Yeah, save some work. All right. So number six, so it's a review of the ZPT Energy Solutions LLC settlement agreement where it's actually really, we just need to, I think we just need to sign it, right?
Yeah.
We've already discussed it.
Already been discussed. The, the redlined copy was sent out to everyone just to take a peek at. So basically, I just, I have a thing with a sign here.
Okay. So basically, for the viewing public, we had a solar site with ZPT. We had some disagreements, we got sued, we're now settling. I won't go into any of it because if you want a copy, contact Laura or Jim Farrar, the town administrator, and you can get a copy of the settlement. So, okay, so we, I don't even know, do we need to, we don't even need to vote.
Vote on it, you can sign it.
All right.
You just had, the way I understood the last was you just had to authorize Jim to sign it again so that it didn't need, we didn't need to. Or is that not correct?
I'm not sure.
I have a note here.
What, what's the?
Yes, so the signatures are select board signed, they're assigned. And it's got the ZBA, so that's a whole other thing. And then it's specifically Planning Board.
Okay.
So if.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll sign after the meeting. Okay, so that's good.
I think you're supposed to take a vote on it.
I have, I have a note here. It says, approve and authorize chair in open meeting, in open session at next meeting.
Okay, all right. So can I have a motion?
I make a motion. Will you accept the settlement agreement for ZPT?
And you got to authorize me to sign or look at your other page?
That's all I have.
Turn that over, turn that over, all the way over. What does your note say there?
Approve and authorize chair in open session at next meeting.
So you got to authorize the chair.
It has to be part of the motion.
Okay. So I make a motion. We approve the settlement with ZPT and authorize the chair to sign for the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Ed Landigan, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Motion carries. All right. Is there a motion for the minutes from September 9th, 2024?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 9th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Ed Landigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. David Dufrain was not there. Any new business?
Nope.
Sir.
Any old business?
Nope.
Pepsi truck.
Pepsi truck, this, the perpetual old business. You'll learn about the Pepsi truck, Laura, over time.
Yeah.
Something about the one on Southbridge Road?
Yeah, how did you know? Okay.
Okay.
All right, comments and concerns?
No.
Nobody, okay.
Nobody comment, no.
No, okay, no one on Zoom? I don't know who's on Zoom. Okay. Bills, we don't, do we have any bills?
We do. We just have those two OTO invoices for the services rendered through August 31st.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve OTO bills?
The amounts.
You got the amounts?
I do. The invoice for the Lot 3 report was $2,956.18. The Lot 4 report amount was $411.57. So the totaling for the two invoices, $3,367.75.
Okay.
Somebody make that motion?
Sedmo.
So moved.
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Ed Landigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. The bills are approved. All right, our next meeting date is.
21st.
October 21st. We'll have NextGen back, we'll have Agilis back and other fun things. Stay tuned.
And I'll do a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second, all in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Ed Landigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye, we are adjourned.